Something that we prepared in advance, but I wanted to make a motion that the funds received for the two school properties that we've just agreed to sell be designated to the other city building line item within the public works budget so that it will allow the building committee to use these funds to address some of the needs of the restoration of the Memorial Boulevard building.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I will say that I don't agree with this and that the council decide how the funds are in our spat, that's up to the Board of Finance and our controller, so I will not agree to this.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of that either, but I believe that these schools which have been a, and again, they've been a drain on our resources for a number of years. The thing in school, we've been heating that place and keeping electricity there for five years now, I believe. You know, return it to our funds and allow the Board of Finance to deal with this.
Can I amend my motion to suggest that to the Board of Finance? And I'm not trying to usurp our power, I'm just making the suggestion that the funds could be, you know, certainly used to help the school, the other school.
Do we have a second to that amendment?
Well, first, the other motion has to be withdrawn.
No, use the amendment.
I'm just amending it.
That was an amendment?
And I'm amending it, she just...
Then, yeah, I second the amendment.
Okay. Again, I'm still gonna have the same feeling that is now up to this council to decide, it's up to the Board of Finance, that's what we have with Board of Finance, so I won't support that. Any discussion on the...
I didn't like the first motion because I didn't want to, I wouldn't want to circumvent the Finance Board, but the second motion as a suggestion that perhaps they may want to consider doing that, that I could support doing that.
The other discussion, now we're voting on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No. Two noes. Now we're voting on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes, all opposed? No. No. What if you go? Yes, five yeses. Two passes. Okay.
May I just take a moment?
Yes, please.
To thank the council for their support.
Name, address, or name.
I'm sorry. Ted Lazarus, Dr. North Creek in Litchfield from Parkland, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank the council for its support and to give you my personal undertaking that both the council and the community of Bristol is going to be very proud of what happens to Bristol.
Thank you for coming to Bristol. Okay. Now we're still going, the committee report starting by that.
Yes, yes, I do. Let's start with Parks. The second winter youth program and Learn to Swim registration began yesterday and will continue through the month of January. Programs and classes are set to start the first week of February. On Saturday, February 7th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Parks Department is hosting a frozen float festival at the Dennis Malone Aquatic Center. The outdoor ice rink opened this past Saturday for ice skating, but I'm available to skate weather permitting, on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Thursday and Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Saturday from Sunday, excuse me, Saturday and Sunday from noon to 5:00 p.m. Also, from the library, January is National Hobby Month and the Bristol Public Library invites you to try something new with Universal Class. Online courses featuring over 500 classes, including sewing, knitting, fishing, genealogy, scrapbooking, music appreciation, and more are available for free with your Bristol Library card. Just visit the library's website and look for the Universal Class banner and you can sign up. AARP Tax Aid is going to be available on Tuesdays from February 3rd to April 14th. Again, that's AARP Tax Aid, available on Tuesdays from February 3rd to April 14th. The Tax Aid program begins at 11:00 a.m. on the lower level of Bristol Public Library and ends at 3:00 p.m. There are no advanced appointments. Patrons may sign in on a first come, first served basis until the day's session is full. AARP Tax Aid is available free to taxpayers with low to moderate income and special attention to those 60 and older. And also, Your Honor, I have a motion from police. Do you want me to take that up under new business? Do you want to do that now?
I take them. Yeah, take them.
All right. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a lease with ESPN or its assigns for the westerly portion of the Ronzo Road extension to its intersection with Birch Street. The lease term shall be for an initial period of 10 years for $1 and other variable, excuse me, and other valuable considerations, with the option to extend the lease term for two additional five-year periods. I further move that the Corporation Council be authorized to prepare and lease and that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents.
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Your Honor, can we also add to that to place on file the police department's approval of that same action? There were several referrals that went out regarding that ESPN parcel and...
We have a motion for all recommendations and referrals in that file.
Move to put all recommendations on file.
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Good night, John. Anything else?
Yeah, just really quickly then, also for that mayor's task force and energy consumption. I understand there was a company recently that was looking at placing solar panels on the senior housing behind the senior center, but they accidentally looked at the senior center instead and said that the solar panels would work on the senior center but not senior housing behind the senior center. So, I'd like to move that we refer the matter of looking into solar panels on the senior center to mayor's task force and energy consumption. Maybe we can look into it.
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, that's it.
Yes, councilwoman.
No committee reports from me.
Counselor.
The Bristol School Readiness Grant is now serving 402 preschool students. This past year, we've received an expansion slots of 73 additional students and all, and all these spaces are currently filled. The School Readiness Grant brings $2.8 million into our community to support early childhood education. And on February 3rd, with a snow date of the 5th, the School Readiness Council, in collaboration with the Bristol Early Childhood Alliance, is sponsoring a dine in disgust for pre-K and kindergarten teachers and their support staff to have a conversation regarding transition to kindergarten, the challenges, and how to make students school-ready. The invet is going to be held at ESPN's Kid Center in the evening. I also have a couple motions here, one from the marketing committee. And I don't know if, I think most of you here have seen the logo and the tweets that have been done to it, but they have done a very good job with tweets and there's been a lot of positive feedback coming from it. So, in case you haven't seen it, here it is. So, they asked me to make a motion, we'd like to incorporate this and make it our official trademark. So, I move that the Corporation Council research and make an application for the trademark registration of the Bristol colon all heart logo. The rationale to this is to establish and to protect this unique marketing symbol and to be better able to control usage. A lot of time, energy, and money will be used to promote the city using this trademark for years to come. This will be our brand. Trademarking is the first step in announcing and establishing our distinctive character as a community here in the state, in the United States, and throughout the world.
May I have a second?
Second. Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
From the Salary Committee. The Salary, I'll take a motion first, I have three of them. The Salary Committee recommends to the City Council to approve a part-time, non-benefited, non-bargaining position of legal administrative assistant in the Corporation Council's office at $21 an hour, 17 and 1/2 hours a week, and to eliminate one part-time assistant Corporation Council position, refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
That's the final discussion. Oh.
You have discussions?
I did. You know, this is the second time that we've approved a reorganization involving salary codes, and yet, the Assessor's Office suggested reorganization, which really frankly fills the same type of issues, has languished for 18 months. And in the Salary Committee minutes of Monday, January 5th, I see that it was voted on and it was, the motion failed. I'm not sure what brush we're using, but I think that, I'm dismayed that we can't look and give all department heads the ability to decide how best to do their departments, especially when it's, in the case of the Assessor, it was revenue neutral, using an attrition position salary. So, I'm gonna vote no, just on a philosophical basis, that I just think that we need to look at how we do business in terms of these changes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Second motion.
What is it, motion passes? Councilwoman's apple now. Sorry, Counselor.
Second motion, the Salary Committee recommends to City Council to approve changes in salaries and benefits for full-time, non-bargaining employees as proposed and to refer to the Board of Finance for funding and informational purposes.
Second. Motion made, second. Discussion.
I have a discussion. This is something that I opposed in the Salary Committee, and some of the people in this room are affected by it, certainly the non-bargaining supervisors and some of their confidential staff members are, the group we're talking about here. Some of these, the majority of these people are the highest paid people in the City of Bristol, at least on the city side, as opposed to Board of Education. And I opposed the raise because it was proposed to be the same raise that the bargaining units received, which was 1.9% this year. I was opposed to the 1.9% raise at the time, and I voted no for the, two of those contracts here. I thought it should have been more. The bargaining units had gone many years without a raise because of the recession, and they made very little money. And the argument that the non-bargaining folks deserved the same raise, they did, I'm certainly not arguing that, no one, everyone deserved a raise, but the idea that somehow they were equal did not seem right to me. I think what it's doing is it's increasing the gulf between our highest paid and our lowest paid workers. And I hope that the folks that are impacted by that understand that I am not questioning whether they're deserving of a raise or not, because they are. But I'm opposed to the way it was handled, and so I did vote no in Sari Committee, and I will be voting no tonight.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to add to that. I'd like to associate myself with Councilman Fortier's comments because I agree completely. The issue of income inequality is a very real one here in the state of Connecticut and across our country, but especially in the state of Connecticut, more so than any other state in the Union. And as an elected official, I think it's important to recognize income inequality as an issue right here in our own hometown. I agree with Councilman Fortier that employees deserved more than the 1.9% raise that they've gotten, and I appreciate the hard work that department heads do. Before I was an elected councilperson, I really didn't know any of the department heads. But in the last year and few months, I've gotten to know many of them, and I really do admire the work that they do. I think they are worthy employees that bide a great value to the City of Bristol. But they, as well as our mayor and our counselors up here, are making it a little better in these hard times than some of the lowest paid public employees. In supporting them and the very small raise that they've gotten in proportion to their modest salaries, I too will be voting no on this motion. However, I'd like to offer as a possible suggestion that maybe we split this motion in between the department heads and the non-department heads and take two separate votes, if that's a possibility.
I think that's a possibility, as they're all non-bargaining.
Yes, but the difference between department heads and non-department heads, I'm saying.
Make your motion, go ahead.
All right, so move.
What's your motion?
To split this motion in half between voting on the raises for department heads and voting on the raises for non-department head employees, also lumped into this non-bargaining category.
Do we have a second?
What order, is that an amendment to the motion? Is that an amendment to the motion?
Yes, I'd say so, yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Rule call, starting with my far left.
Yes.
Yes.
No. Yes. No.
Yes.
Chair votes no. Motion passes.
So, the motion that we just voted on bifurcated the non-department heads? Just clarification, the amendment.
We just saw they separated.
Okay. So, the amendment we just passed was to separate the proposed raises for the non-bargaining salary schedule as presented, that they would be considered in subsequent votes, department head raises versus non-department head raises.
That's, that was a motion, yes. So, we need a new motion now?
Yes, you need, what they, if I understand correctly, that you're asking that the motion is now going to be a department head raise or a non-department head raise, that somehow you're going to split up the non-bargaining?
Let me call personnel director. I know you just voted on that. How was that gonna happen?
I can't do that, I need it to the council's project to do that.
Okay. So, does Councilman Martin have to amend his motion now?
No.
Because it's his original motion.
You just voted on the motion. His motion was to apply.
I'll rescind, I'll rescind my motion.
Okay. So now we need another motion to go forward with any raises, if any are gonna happen.
I'd like to make a motion that we refer this back to the Salary Committee.
Motion made, second. Discussion. I think it's pretty easy to do a separation out, if salary levels 3, 4, 5, 6, 8...
Yes.
Would get the raises. Salary level 9, 1 code, and salary level, and salary level 11. And the 3 codes that are in salary level 12, which are in the $122,000, $123,000 range, would not get raises.
Okay, so, any other discussion on sending it back to Salary?
I just don't think it's necessary.
I would agree.
Okay. So there's a motion on the table to send it back to Salary. Rule call on that to make it easy for our state clerk, starting with my left.
Send it back to Salary?
Send it back to Salary Committee to re-look at?
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Okay. Councilman Martin, then, tale?
I have an additional motion. The Salary Committee recommends to City Council to approve proposed provisions to the personnel policies and procedures, hiring procedures.
Second. Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Councilman Martin, any other?
Nope.
Counselor, any?
Okay.
Any committee reports?
Yes. I'll make this quick because the night is getting late, but I have a couple of items from the code enforcement. On the agenda, 11, 12, and 13 are the recent proposed tax assessment freeze applications that we're sending. Those files were sent to under separate cover, so you should have received those last week. The other thing that I just want to quickly reference is the fact that we've had a lot of activity. I don't want to really spend a lot of time going over the list, but we have several condemnation orders, abatements in process, and despite the winter weather, the code activity is still at a pretty good pace. So, we welcome, obviously, it's a complaint-driven process. Everybody's been working very hard, and if anybody has any properties of interest, please forward them on. From the Memorial Boulevard, oh shoot, there's one more. We have a shopping cart revision that we need to make a referral to ordinance. It was just discussed last week, and what we're looking to do is streamline and improve the enforceability of the shopping carts, to the point that shopping carts, again, affect quality of life and it's part of the low-line fruit with code enforcement. The current shopping cart ordinance is not workable or enforceable, and it was a product of a compromise agreement several years ago that had a lot of the stores at the table trying to fight enforcement. They have not followed through with any of the things that they said they would do, and so this shopping cart ordinance is a little bit more direct with what we're doing, and it also removes empowerment. The city is not in the empowerment business. So, we have cart recovery, and we have identification, we have some definitions, and we have the modeling legislation after other successful communities who have mandatory plans that are required from stores that have carts. So, because of the proximity of our code enforcement meeting and of the council meeting, I'm doing a request for referral to the ordinance committee that the Corporation Council's office will send to you.
I need a second.
That's a motion, yes.
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And then just quickly, for the Memorial Boulevard, we had a visit yesterday from the state of Connecticut Historic, Connecticut Historic Funds Circuit Writer, and he was on-site looking at the building and giving us some funding options. The committee is working to create its recommendations that will come here, hopefully in February, maybe March. We have active subcommittees that have been reconstituted, that are now honing in on specific tasks, and we will be giving you more information soon. I was gonna bring the plans tonight so people could look at some of the conceptual designs, but knowing what our agenda is, I didn't do so. But it may be something that, if anybody's interested, I can meet with you, but otherwise, if we had a future meeting, I could put them out on that table and explain some of the ideas and the cost factors that are going into our planning. I think that's it.
That's gotta be record.
Nice, that'll be nice. I haven't eaten.
Okay. Unfinished business, starting with my far right.
I do have unfinished business. I just, for the sake of putting it on the record, not for discussion tonight, I would like to have the City Council revisit the Section 8-24 referral process. As we've talked earlier tonight, I think that there's some synergy between committees that we could do, but I've also been trying to track some of these land purchase issues, and I think that some of these requests to the city, and frankly, to the Board of Ed, are coming in at all different points, and they really need to start with the mayor, who needs to put them on the agenda. And I think before things get really out of hand, I counted five just this last month that were happening, but I've seen no documentation for it. They haven't stood here, they've gone to other places, and we really need to streamline that in terms of priorities and the whole strategic planning thing. So, at a later date, I'd like to talk about how we can get back online with the Section 8-24 referrals when people request the city acquire their lands.
I just have a question. How was, and I, I look forward to future discussion, but how is streamlining going to happen when it's just adding two months to the process by coming here, when if I get a letter in my office, I could send it directly to the Board, rather than coming here for this council to send it to the Board when it's gonna happen anyways?
That, that could happen if it goes to the right Boards, but...
Well, it has happened, and then, one of them, you questioned me on.
The Scalia pit proposal went to the Park Court on October 24th. It was referred to the Building and Maintenance Subcommittee, which met on December 4th. At that point, they referred it to the Real Estate Committee, and to my knowledge, that letter has not made it from the second floor to the third floor because the Real Estate Committee has no knowledge of it. At no point, at any point of those referrals, did that matter go to the Planning Commission, which is the base of Subsection 8-24. So you are correct in that you could have done that at any point at any of those interim places, but it hasn't been done. So at some point, somebody needs to refer the Scalia pit and/or the ancillary piece of Scalia property, which is now being considered by the Inland Wetlands Commission on the other side of Route 72, which also has not come here, although they sent you a letter dated December 12th, that hasn't come here either. So at some point, I would just like to know what it is we're talking about and what we're potentially buying. The water containment process for Waterbury Road would be a very interesting parcel to acquire for flood and prevention control, but that wasn't the one that they offered to us, but it's the one that the Wetlands Commission is talking about, and I think I've probably explained my point about why we need a straight line.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other business? Councilman Martin?
No.
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 Chair has none. Resignations.
Resignations.
The resignations, appointments.
You do new business?
Did I miss any business?
Yes, you did.
Oh, all right, new business. Counselor.
No.
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 Counselor.
Yes. I would just like to distribute to my colleagues a op-ed piece by Pullman and Conway about board member term limits for Board of Education and whether they're legal. This poses that they're not, and so I thought this might jumpstart a conversation of whether we need another charter revision for 2015. So, I'll just make a motion to refer the matter to the mayor's office for consultation with the Corporation Council's office.
Second. Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Anything else?
Yeah.
Chair has no new business. Appointments. Mayor's Task Force Sunday, Mayor's Appointment, appoint Councilman Capital Brown, Council Liaison, Bristol Development Authority to appoint Tom Hicks to replace Scott Spelinski, Section 2-9 resignation term to 219. Reboot. Second. Yes. All in, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Fireflies Benefit Fund to appoint David Burks, Burks, to replace Anthony Benvenuto, two-year term to 117.
I'll make a motion to appoint David Burks.
I'd like your opinion. I knew that, too. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Board of Fire Commissioners to appoint Burton O'Neill, three-year term to 118, and to reappoint Donald Gorgson, three-year term to 118. So move. Second. Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Freedom of Information Advisory Board to appoint Alex Kears, three-year term to 118. Reboot. Second. Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Bristol Historic District Commission to reappoint Robert Perdrew, five-year term to 120, to reappoint Denise Albert, alternate member, five-year term to 120.
Okay.
Second. Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Inland Wetlands, Mayor's Appointment, to appoint Dennis Hart, alternate member, three-year term to 118, to reappoint Robert Minch, Minchell, alternate member, three-year term to 118. Second.
I think their mayor's...
Yep. Board of Library Directors to appoint Jeff Poidko, three-year term to 118, to reappoint Thomas Lapore, three-year term to 118.
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Bristol Parking Authority to appoint Mike Mazzarelli to replace Joe Fitzgerald, resigned, three-year term to 417. Reboot. Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Bristol Property Renewable Corporation to appoint David White to replace Mark Blum, resigned, unexpired term to 315, and to appoint Peter Matthews to replace Michael Seminaro.
San Martino.
San Martino, resigned, unexpired term to 315. Reboot.
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Bristol Transportation Commission to appoint Alan Weiner, City Planner, three-year term to 118. To reappoint Franklin Caputo, Citizen-at-Large, three-year term to 118. To reappoint Bruno Chazinski, Citizen-at-Large, three-year term to 118. Approve.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Zoning Commission to appoint Luis Provenzano to move up as regular member to replace David White, unexpected, unexpired term to 617. Approve. Second. Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Zoning Commission to appoint Tom Bruni to replace Luis Provenzano as alternate member, unexpired term to 1216. Approve. Second. Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. The Building Committee, I'm going to resend Calvin Brown from Building Committee and appoint myself Ken Cocaine as a member. That doesn't need a council vote. So that is Appointments. Item number 10.
Award of Contract 2C1538, installation sidewalks on Crown Street to TNF Chemical, Concrete LLC for $68,270 in authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute any necessary documents to effectuate this contract.
Motion. Second. Second. Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 11.
Approval of Tax Assessment Freeze Application to Jane Neiman LLC, owner of 42 Rudolph Road, for the rehabilitation of a blighted property with restoration of a single-family structure. So moved.
Second. Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 12.
Approval of Tax Assessment Freeze Application of Jean-Marc McQuarrie Jr., owner of 253 Beth Savile, for the rehabilitation of a blighted property with completion of a new single-family structure.
Approve. Second. Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 13.
Approval of Tax Assessment Freeze Application of Connecticut Valley Developers LLC, owner of 52 Sharing Street, for the rehabilitation of a blighted property with completion of any single-family structure.
Approve. Second. Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 14.
Award of Contract 2P1544, Professional Services Mechanical Engineering Relative to Improvements at the Dennis Malone Aquatic Center, to LaRero Engineering Associates Incorporated for $26,950, and authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute any necessary documents and referral to Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Approve. Second. Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 15.
Award of Contract 2P1529, Implementation of Vulp P Phone Systems to Precision Computer Services Incorporated for $252,055, and authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute any necessary documents to effectuate said contract.
Approve. Second. Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 16.
Award of Contract 2P1528, Architectural Services, Firehouse 5 renovation and expansion to Drummy Rosane Anderson Incorporated for $38,400, and authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute any necessary documents to effectuate said contract.
Approve. Second. Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 17.
Award of Contract 2C1524B, Replacement of Emergency Generator at Bristol Police Department to RNC Electrical LLC for $288,400, and authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute any necessary documents, documents to effectuate said contract.
Approve. Second. Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 18.
To authorize the tax collector corporation council, Assistant Corporation Council, Mayor or Acting Mayor to bid at the foreclosure sale for 11 First Street, Bristol, Assessor's Map 3. So moved.
Second. Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 19.
The consent calendar, and there are seven items. 19A is the approval of tax refunds dated January 6, 2015. 19B to place on file the recommendation from the Board of Water Commissioners regarding approval to close a portion of Ronzel Road Extension, subject to ESPN being responsible for maintenance of the water main in that section of road. C to place on file the new hire report for December 2014. D, the Ordinance Committee to adopt a new section to the Bristol Code Ordinance, Section 12-166, tax exemption for qualified veterans. E is the Ordinance Committee to adopt amendments to the Bristol Code Ordinance, Section 21-25.1, liability for injuries caused by presence of ice and snow. F, Ordinance Committee to waive the reading of proposed amendments and schedule a public hearing on January 21, 2015 at 4:10 p.m., to introduce, introduce amendments to Bristol Code Ordinance, Section 2-101, regular meetings, meeting schedule of City Council Committees. And G, Ordinance Committee to waive the reading of proposed amendments and schedule a public hearing on January 21, 2015 at 4:20 p.m., to introduce amendments to Bristol